Peter Lemon.
Live streaming now? Next one. Let's see if you folks with us remotely. Christopher, oh, Christopher Boyd, I don't know who that is.
That's my, that's Project Capper.
Oh.
It's my tax abatement.
Is that Ellers?
Nope, he's the consultant.
Oh, the consultant.
We'll probably have to put it under, uh...
You ready?
Nothing to amend, right?
It's nine o'clock and I'll call the county board meeting to order and we'll begin on the flag question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, call the roll.
Commissioner Schlangen.
You're muted.
Aye.
Um, Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Pop.
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Here.
Commissioner Heinem.
Here.
Let's move or amend the agenda?
We have no changes.
I'll move to approve.
Oh, second, sir.
Motion's been made in second to approve the agenda. Call the roll again, Beth.
Commissioner Schlangen.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Pop.
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem.
Aye.
Open form, is there anybody back there signed up? Thanks, Heather. Consent agenda. We have items one through eleven.
Thank you. One through eleven. I'll look for approval, or does anybody want any of these pulled for further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull number seven just for a little further discussion, maybe we can put it under the regular agenda.
So you want to move it to the regular agenda?
Yep.
Uh, where would you, where would we like to put that?
Uh, let's put it underneath Monti.
Sure, I know, I invited Mike to be here, so, uh, sure, if we want to talk about that right off, right at the beginning, sure, great.
Yeah, we can do that first, actually.
Okay.
Monti, you can, like, do that first.
All right, sounds good. So, looking for approval with the exception of number seven, move to the regular agenda.
I'll move approval. I'll second.
Motion's been made in second to approve the agendas with items one through eleven, with the exception of number seven. You want to call the roll, Beth?
Commissioner Schlangen. Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Pop.
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Then I'll go to, um, Monti, headly county administrators.
You want to go ahead and take that, the consent?
Number seven.
Probably, I think Mike is the best person to talk about that, you know, what we're trying to accomplish today. It doesn't appear in the dean is here today, but I think Mike can probably cover it for us.
Okay.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
Is this mic on?
Is the green light on?
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, I haven't looked at, uh, number seven, but, uh, after, uh, brief discussion in the hallway with Monti and Jared this morning, it, it looks like that, that item is, is good to go from my perspective and the auditor's office. It's just continuing maintenance on the existing tax and camera program that we're currently using to keep that functional for the next three years. And certainly, we don't want the vendor to check out on us if, because they're not getting that support and maintenance from enough counties in Minnesota. The other thing is if we don't agree to that, then we could be looking at early withdrawal fees and, uh, we wouldn't have a replacement anyway. So, that is, uh, you know, there, I think there's some small increases in the pricing that are pretty typical for a vendor every year. Um, and that keeps us solvent, functional through 2023 when we will, uh, as a team, select a new vendor.
How, Mike, how long does that take to select a new vendor? What, what is the process?
Uh, you know, we were hoping to kind of discuss that with the county board, but it looks like that's been tabled. So typically, we would want to have that vendor selected within the next three to four months so that their implementation over, could happen over the next fifteen to eighteen months, depending on whether it was one department on one vendor, or another department on another vendor, or both departments on one vendor. So, we have some, some of that information for you already. Um, I'm happy to share it when the county board, uh, is ready for that. We, me and another department head are going to work through some things with, um, with Monti here first and maybe with the county board at a, a committee of the whole. And, uh, we'll be happy to present that at a meeting, uh, at your request.
Okay, any other questions for Mike?
No, I appreciate the talk today, Mike. It clarified a lot. I know I was looking at, um, these fees going all the way out through 2023, but when you look at a fifteen, eighteen-month implementation and then a election year in 2022, it's not, it wouldn't be very good to do that all in, in that year. So then it gives all 2023 to run simultaneously, so it made a lot of sense. Thank you for that.
Yeah, and just one further comment, just, you know, in preparation, because we care a lot about the taxpayers and their funds, is that 2023 is going to be an expensive year for the county as we transition between one product to another. You have to run the two products side by side for at least six months, preferably a year, because our office is run on a calendar and we need to be able to check every function in one system, in the new system, in order to make sure that it's functioning properly for a proper transition. The old system we've had for thirty years. So as you can imagine, this is going to be a lot of growing pain for the county. And, uh, I know me and the dean and Heather is here today are looking forward to guide the county through this process.
Okay, and we, you'll come back with the estimated cost in that?
Yeah, I have some of that information already. I certainly can provide it to Monti and he can provide that to you if you'd like it earlier.
No, that's fine, it's, when you come, as long as we have it when you get here.
Yep, absolutely.
The, the sooner the better.
Yeah.
Okay. The sooner the better. Let's get this process going.
Okay.
Correct.
Because we've been talking about this for two years now, I think, right? Year and a half?
Two and a half years, approximately.
Yeah, let's get this process moving.
I guess the other question, there's a lot of counties that are going to be switching to this?
That's correct. So, uh, you know, originally, we were working with MCCC on our current product and going forward, we may work with MCCC. Uh, my preference is a, is a different vendor. But me and the auditor and treasurer both have different preferences for which vendor. A unified solution is certainly the simplest option, but it may not, uh, meet both of our needs. Uh, that just depends on, on a conversation with, uh, the county board and certainly what's in the best interest of our taxpayers.
So, I got one more question, Mike. Is the current vendor no longer going to be available? Or are they, are we just moving because it's more efficient, or?
Kind of all of the above. The main thing is that they're becoming obsolete.
Okay, well, that gets to the point where maybe Mike or AMC needs to be, they'll be aware of this and maybe they'll, they'll lobby for some funding for counties if it's a huge expense.
I, I hadn't thought of that. Um, that is an excellent idea. We do have, uh, about two-thirds, if not more, of the expense already budgeted for.
Okay.
Which is excellent. We could have more than two-thirds of the expense budgeted for, depending on final pricing. Uh, but with preliminary pricing in place, the way it is, with updated estimates and quotes, we're about two-thirds of the way there, which is really excellent. It's already, it's already budgeted, it's already sitting in an account. No additional, uh, burden there. Uh, we'd probably be looking at about another, uh, ninety thousand dollars, uh, to make it, uh, a really good transition to a high-quality vendor that's well, uh, suited to continue business in Minnesota across the nation and put Benton County in a competitive position going forward.
Okay, maybe that, that next Micah meeting, we have open for me and, uh, Commissioner Kapinski can seek out and see what other counties in, like, in the Mike organization are doing.
Yeah, and I have some of that information that I can provide to anybody who wants it at any time.
All right, thanks.
Thank you for your time, commissioners.
So do we, we need a motion to?
Yes.
Approve number seven now?
I'll make a motion to approve number seven on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to approve number seven of the consent agenda. You want to call the roll, Beth?
Commissioner Schlangen.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Pop.
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem.
Okay, and then we have under Monti's employee recognition program?
Yes, I can give a quick introduction, is we have a recognition program in our personal policies and, uh, every quarter, we ask employees and supervisors if they want to submit nominations for recognition. And then those nominations are considered by, uh, our recognition committee and, um, they have various criteria they go through. And in this instance, we have a nomination for Amanda Edwards and our, our committee, uh, wholeheartedly recommended, uh, recognizing Amanda for the things that she's done. And I understand that Peggy Kacelnek is here to, uh, introduce Amanda and, and, and tell us what went into the nomination. So come right on up, Peggy.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
I am pleased to, uh, recognize, uh, Amanda for her Innovation and Efficiency Award. She was nominated by several of the social workers, uh, Lindsay Bordech sent the nomination in. Back, it was almost a year ago, we started the implementation of Homebase, which is an electronic system for the social workers, case management system. Um, then the pandemic came, it got delayed a little, but we decided to move forward. Mandy was, um, as Lindsay wrote, I'll just read some of Lindsay's words. "Mandy goes above and beyond to make things run efficiently. She's always working to ensure that everything is organized and completed on time and that our jobs are easy as they can be. She is the true definition of a support staff in that she supports us and tries to come up with new ways to make things run more efficiently and quickly. She's always quick to help out when someone doesn't understand the functionality and has been extremely helpful in ensuring that the billing process works well." That was pretty, that was a huge, um, a huge change for our staff is, is the electronic billing. Also, with people working from home instead of social workers coming in to print things and send things out, Mandy has been kind of the stone here that supports them and they send everything to Mandy. She's, uh, working from home, mailing things out, faxing things and scanning them for workers so that they don't have to come in and do it. And also, we had, um, another case aid support staff that has been out for the majority of the year and Mandy has stepped up and done some of that work, taking on the social and medical histories that they need to complete as part of their adoption cases. She's had a lot put on her shoulders with everyone working from home and with Homebase coming and she's continued to complete everything that is needed and whatever is needed. So I'm pleased to present Mandy Edwards to this award.
We, we need a photo.
Yep.
We need a photo. Uh, maybe with our board chair, would that be okay? Socially distanced?
Congratulations, Beth. Yes.
I can come around. I see she's got, she's got her Benton County mask on.
Congratulations, Mandy. You did a great job and we value employees, you know, that...
Do you want to take one without the mask, or does it matter to me? Okay, let's do one without the mask. Okay, one, two, three. Perfect. Thank you, guys.
Congratulations again. I think that says a lot when other employees speak highly of our employees. It's a good recognition for Benton County.
Absolutely, you bet. Uh, so it looks like we're ready to move on now to Amanda has our next day, and the round one of our businesses and grants. And you should have a revised listing of BEP's recommended grant awards.
Good morning, Chair, County Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
Yeah, so Monti indicated that, um, you have an updated list for your review. Just wanted to go over a few statistics for you regarding this, here's, or, I'm sorry, this business relief, um, round. So we received, uh, BEP received a total of seventy-one applications, a total request of nine hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Oh, is this better?
There you go.
Yep. Okay. Sorry about that. So we received seventy-one applications with a total request of nine hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars. The total amount that we have, um, to expend, um, as we received, uh, this new business relief fund from the state is seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-six cents. Um, the total amount that, um, is recommended to be approved this morning of the forty-three applications in your revised sheet is three hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Uh, so that leaves us with, um, just over four hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars to, to reallocate, um, those dollars out to the business community. And, um, just, you know, a little bit of, little bit of background too, on the applications. Uh, so out of the seventy-one applications, forty-three are, are recommended to be approved this morning. Uh, sixteen were denied or rejected and, um, that had to do with whether they were either a home-based business or their revenues actually increased over the comparison periods. We had three late submissions. Seven were waiting for additional information from, and then two of them were non-compliant. Non-compliant meaning, um, they weren't, uh, the two businesses that applied were either, uh, not compliant with city or county, um, ordinances.
Okay.
So that gives us, um, a total of seventy-one applications for your review.
Um, is there any questions about applicants or the number, or?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, Amanda, you said that you had three late applications?
Correct.
Uh, and then seven more that came in, too?
Uh, no, seven were waiting just for additional information and we can, you know, if we receive that information, we can put that on the next agenda, um, for a county to consider in March. Again, um, so at, at your March second meeting, I'm recommending that BEP review all of the existing applications that we received to date instead of, um, and actually, our committee recommended this, not opening it up to additional applications, but just, um, reallocate those funds to some of those businesses that have already applied and already have been vetted. And, um, the reason is, in, in our, in our commission, had a lot of discussion about this and, and really, we, the time that we have to reallocate those funds out, um, is very short. And the advertising, the, you know, the pushing the program out, it would take quite a bit of time to get that out again. And to all of our city partners and, uh, and folks, um, trying to push that application process and to review that.
Steve?
Sure. So with the three late and the seven that has the more information, uh, I'm, I'm assuming you have a dollar amount of what those ten applications would have for money?
I do, but I can, I have it, um, but I can, I can deliver that. I didn't write it down.
That's fine. I'm assuming that's not going to be more than a hundred thousand dollars, though.
Probably not. No, each one of those applications, um, would be at a max funded of ten thousand dollars, so...
So that's going to leave us with approximately three hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars left over?
Roughly, give or take.
And then where are we going to throw the rest of that?
Um, so BEP is, um, proposing that we get together following the county board meeting this morning and, uh, review all of the applications that we received to date.
Okay.
And then, um, you know, identify a way to reallocate those funds out to the applicants that have already, um, applied.
Okay.
So what happens to the extra, if we don't allocate all the money, do we have to return it?
I believe so, but we're going to try really hard to allocate those monies.
Thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that the late applications get, get into the process.
So that was the other question that I had for you. So, um, we have three late applications. Um, they were received on February second, a few days after the application deadline. Are you okay with adding those in?
Absolutely.
Yes.
And then, um, the other question that I had for you is, uh, the home-based business. We did not, um, include that, uh, category within our original grant application and guidelines. And a lot of that had to do, and I'm, you know, just putting it out there, but a lot of that had to do with the discussions that we had with the InterCounty Association and, um, you know, various other groups. Some, some counties are, um, allowing home, some certain home-based businesses to apply for funding. Um, but it gets to be sometimes very difficult with the applications that we receive in from home-based businesses. Some of them are, um, you know, professionals, uh, that can operate without any COVID restrictions out of their home. Some other, there's some other certain businesses that, um, are, you know, in the construction industry or, or whatnot that, uh, maybe office out of their home, but produce, you know, provide services outside their home. Um, so I think BEP, uh, would look at that as well, but at this point, um, we're not recommending to include home-based businesses.
So the guidelines that were put before us from the state, did they say it had to be a brick and mortar?
Yeah, so we, I mean, it, it doesn't specifically say brick and mortar, but the discussions that we had with the county groups, um, between the economic development, folks that are administering the program, um, really kind of, uh, turn away from funding home-based businesses in this round. If you recall CARES grants, we funded home-based businesses, but this round, we did not.
Jared?
Amanda, just for clarification for some people that might be wondering out there, what, you see some that are ten thousand, some that are five thousand, stuff like that. Maybe you can just clarify that.
Yep, absolutely. So, um, the way that we came up with the dollar amounts was based on their application and their profit and loss statement. So we looked at comparison periods of November and December, two months, November and December of 2019 and November and December of 2020. And we looked at the increase or loss of revenue over that period of time. And if there was a loss of revenue, um, that was ten thousand dollars or greater, and they fit into our categories and into our criteria, we allocated ten thousand dollars. Now, if the loss was less than ten thousand dollars, based on the criteria, we recommended that smaller amount in the application. So, um, and then sole proprietors were to receive half of what their total loss was over those comparison periods. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you. So, if, with the three hundred thousand plus that we got left, and some must have, at ten thousand, must have been maxed out, are, are we going to have trouble dispossessing this amount of money?
So, when we, so that's a really good question, Chair. When we looked at all of the profit and loss statements, I actually totaled up, um, the losses over the two, two months, between 2019 and 2020, and we, and there's four million dollars worth of loss. Um, so I'm very certain that we can reallocate those funds out to the businesses that really need them.
Any other questions?
Nope.
All right, um, do we need approval to?
So the motion that I'm recommending?
Yes.
The board make this morning? Give me a second. Because we still, um, we want to make sure that, um, all of these businesses or organization have no current tax lanes on record with the Minnesota Secretary of State. It's just taking a little bit of time for that. So the motion that would recommend the board take is, uh, recommend approval provided the business or organization has no current tax lanes on record with the Minnesota Secretary of State. And then we'll look those up prior to issuing those checks.
Okay, um, before we go any further, does Commissioner Johnson or Commissioner Schlangen have any questions?
No. Mr. Chair, um, I, I think because of the timeline for me to be able to see the list, I'm going to end up abstaining, but I, I would like you to know that I do support the list and I understand it. But because of the timing, I'm going to abstain in the vote.
Okay, don't, thanks, Scott.
Uh, Mr. Chair, in the motion, do we have to include the late applications, too?
Absolutely, yes, please.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion.
Yep, that's the motion. Amanda said what extended, uh, late applications included into...
So recommend approval of the business, um, recommend approval provided the business or organization has no current tax lanes on record with the Minnesota Secretary of State and include the three late applications.
Correct, thank you.
I'll second that. Well, the motion's been made in second to review the applications. Any further discussion?
Again, Mr. Chair, if I could, Amanda, I just wanted to make sure that you're clear that I'm totally supportive of this. Again, because of the timing for me to see the list, I'm, I feel that I need to abstain from it.
Certainly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Beth, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Schlangen.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Will I abstain?
Commissioner Pop.
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Great job, Amanda.
Thank you.
You got to be one of the most popular people in Benton County after a year. I mean, everybody must like to see you, right?
They sure do.
Okay, and thanks for all the work you've put into this. I, you know, um, I sit on the BEB board and not only has Amanda done this, she's got multiple other tasks that she's trying to accomplish at the same time. So she'll probably be pretty relieved when this is all done and can work on what she really loves, I think.
Yep, exactly, thank you.
Amanda, does Christopher need the screen? Does he need to share?
Uh, no, no, I think he's just monitoring from afar.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Amanda.
Okay. Chair and, and county commissioners, and in your packet, uh, this morning, you will see, um, a motion, or a resolution calling for a public hearing on a proposed, uh, property tax abatement for, um, Project Cappers, um, AKA, um, Performance Food Group. The City of Rice and Benton County have received a request for tax abatement assistance in the form of pay-as-you-go property tax abatement financing submitted by the developer. Um, the request is related to a proposed expansion of an existing facility in the City of Rice. Uh, the, the project includes up to two phases. Phase one is a demolition of an existing sixty-five-hundred-square-foot building and the construction of a new twenty-two-thousand-five-hundred-square-foot building. Um, they will be adding, uh, some cooler space and processing space. And then phase two, so this is two phases, a two-phase project. Phase two will substantially renovate a twenty-five-thousand-square-foot, um, added, uh, space for added cooler space. The project anticipates to create roughly twenty-two new jobs within two years with an average wage of forty-five thousand per year. Um, the company currently employs two hundred and eighty-five full-time equivalent, um, employees. The developer's total tax abatement request is six hundred thousand, with approximately two hundred being requested from the city and four hundred thousand from the county over a period of fifteen years. That period of time will, um, be adjusted slightly, um, either down or remain the same, um, provided that we finish the, the final analysis and request. And then, um, that will be presented at the public hearing that we're proposing to schedule, um, in March. So the abatement request is only on the new taxable value, so nothing that is, that the company is currently paying would be abated, it's only on the new value. And, um, the assistance would be used to finance certain costs with the demolition and construction on the approximately twelve-point-four-million-dollar project. We've retained Ellers, um, uh, to review the company's financial history, information, and estimate of tax abatement revenues for the project and then also, um, assist in determining whether the project is likely to proceed but for the assistance. And then we've also retained, um, Gina Fiorney with Kennedy and Graven to perform all the legal work, which would include drafting resolutions, um, public hearing notices and the development agreement. The developer, of course, uh, so that, so BEP would facilitate all of this process on behalf of the city and the county. And then the developer is responsible. And then the developer is responsible then for paying the fees associated with the financial consultant and the attorney. Those charges, you know, are typically incurred by the developer or the applicant so that those fees are not, you know, an undue hardship against the taxpayers of this county as we review those, those applications. So I provided you with a brief overview of tax abatement financing. You also received a presentation at your last meeting. How timely. And then the application review. So as I mentioned, this is in the form of pay-as-you-go. The risk is absolutely on the developer and not the city or the county. And then the county would collect those tax abatement revenues from the proposed project and then reimburse those developer, reimburse the developer for those certain project costs. Jason from Ellers is also here. I, so the information that I provided you within your packet is very, very close to the final product. It may change slightly prior to the public hearing, but just maybe on the terms. And then the memo kind of, the memo summarizes the developer's request for assistance. So you have all of that information, so you have time to look at it, time to digest it before the public hearing. So the action that we're requesting this morning is really just to approve, approve a resolution calling for that public hearing on the proposed property tax abatement. So I can certainly open it up for questions, or if you have questions specifically for Jason to review the analysis, you can. Otherwise, we can also give you some time to look it over and ask those questions at the meeting on the 15th.
Steve?
Chair, Amanda, this went through Rice already, the city council, correct?
Correct. Yep.
And they approved it?
Correct. Yep. They approved the public hearing to
Correct.
to move forward.
Now, with my understanding of reading all of this, they still do not know if they're actually going to be doing this yet. It's got to be approved by their major company, correct?
Right, that is correct.
So this is just a preliminary?
Very much so. So the resolution calling for a public hearing is not an approval of the project. It's really, I mean, as part of the amount that they're requesting, it triggers business subsidy policy. So anything over $150,000 requires a public hearing. And that's what we're looking at, you know, approving this morning, is that resolution.
I know this company has, you know, options in other places. So if they would choose a different place prior to the public hearing, would we just cancel the public hearing?
Yeah, I mean, at that point, we would.
Okay. But they've been
We would have to open up the public hearing and then close.
Yeah, they've been a long stay in, in the City of Rice.
I think that'd be good to keep.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to go ahead with the public hearing.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to go ahead with the public hearing. Beth, do you want to call the roll?
Mr. Chair?
Oh, sorry.
Yep. Do we have to set the date?
It's in the resolution.
The date is in the resolution. I believe it's March 15.
I did see March. I was just
Yeah, March 16.
March 16.
Just didn't know if we had to include that in the
It's already in the resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Schlungen?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amanda.
Yep, thank you.
Morning, Roxanne.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
All right, let's see. The first item that we have up here is a resolution proposing Benton County Boundary Commission plat number one special assessment distribution term and rates and to set a public hearing on the matter. We discussed this matter, I believe it was February 2nd, and I walked you through the total cost for the Boundary Commission plat totaling And as laid out within the resolution, we've determined to assess the cost against the benefited property owners, which has come to $2,909.81 per parcel and including the township for the public right-of-way that's dedicated. Additionally, the term was set at 10 years at a rate of 2% per annum from the date of the adoption of the assessment resolution. With that, we would like to set the public hearing date for March 16th at 9:00 a.m. Any questions on the resolution? Of course, none of this is set in place until the adoption of the official resolution on March 16th. My office would work with the Auditor of Treasurers Office and the Attorney's Office in drafting the public notices that would go out. They must be received by the public two weeks prior to the public hearing. However, I want to get them out as soon as possible so that we can give plenty of time for them to review what is being proposed and to make accommodations if they need to attend the meeting.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to, I'll move to approve the tax resolution and set the public hearing to consider the Boundary Commission special assessment and for the public hearing date of March 16th, I believe Roxanne said.
Correct. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'll bet you're about as glad as I am to have this just about through, um, done. It's been a long process, a very long process.
Any others? Hearing none. Beth, do you want to call the roll?
Commissioner Schlungen?
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Beth.
Yeah, I have a question. What time is the public hearing on the 16th for the previous one?
They're both here at 9:00.
If I may answer, we typically publish all of our public hearings at 9:00, but we, we possibly would start them later. You know, it's sometimes a risk. Let's just say you publish it to start at 10:00, but you get way ahead in your schedule, then you've got to sit and wait. So when we have that final agenda done for the 16th, we'll have a better sense of exactly when this will start. I should add, most likely, because this will draw up a pretty good crowd attention, we most likely will have this in right after consent agenda at 9:00. I think that's what Roxanne and I kind of discussed is so those folks can participate and then get about the rest of their day.
Yeah. So we're going to be both virtual and in-person on this one?
Roxanne, what did you contemplate for this? And were you gonna, is it going to be all remote for the public or?
We'll treat it as any other public hearing. Well, we will provide that remote option and allow them to call in if they so choose. The important part for the public to realize is that if they want to appeal this, they must send in written appeal to the County Auditor of Treasurers Office prior to or at the public hearing.
Okay.
I suppose we could, we could still get some folks who show up in person and we'll do our best to accommodate that.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Otherwise, Beth, do you want to call the roll then?
Commissioner Schlungen?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, and we move on?
Okay. So the next agenda item is to move forward with accepting the request for proposal from Allied Waste Services, or otherwise known as Republic Services, for our Amnesty Day events for a term of 2021 to 2024. They were the only ones that did submit a bid for this process, and we have been working with them for the past six years. This did go to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee and was discussed at that level. And the recommendation was to move forward with approval to, or with the recommendation to move forward with creating and drafting that contract and then bringing it back to the board to sign. One thing to point out in the RFP, and this is just all formalities, is that they had written down 2020 through 2023. They, they meant 2021 through 2024. Just something that needs to be pointed out for that. Of course, the costs do increase, and that's to be expected with anything. The cost of services, the cost of recycling all increase over time. One other thing I do want to point out is that I, it's unclear if we will have Amnesty Day at the Sauk Rapids High School in June. There's been sort of a feel that maybe we're not necessarily wanted there on the weekends. There's a lot more happening at the schools, especially now with remote services. A lot more is happening on the weekends. They're pushing for more of a much cleaner sweep immediately following the event. Makes it difficult for staff to arrange to have a street sweeper come out there and such. And so after discussions with Public Works, that may be where our spring event is held and most likely our fall one as well.
You're talking out here on Highway 25?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions? Other questions?
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval of awarding Allied Waste, the contract for years 2021 through 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion before I call the roll? Hearing none? Beth?
Commissioner Schlungen?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Roxanne. I'll now recess the county board to conduct the human services, and I'll turn it over to Commissioner Heinem.
Okay, we'll call the Human Services Board to order. Motion to approve or amend the agenda. Bob, is there anything changed?
No changes.
Move for approval. Go ahead.
Did you do it?
We Do the second.
I can second it.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
It's a roll call.
Beth, sorry, roll call.
Commissioner Schlungen?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem?
Aye.
Okay, consent item, agenda number one. Motion for approval, please.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schlungen?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem?
Aye. Bob, do you have any updates or anything for us?
No, I do not. I thought I'd come here to see if you had any questions for me.
Any questions for Bob?
Nope. Great job on the, the COVID shots. I got my second last Tuesday.
Yeah, we're going to have a double COVID clinic on Thursday because we got a lot more shots than we expected. So we're going to be running two clinics on this coming Thursday, so it'll be interesting. Hopefully, we have enough help to run both of those clinics. It'll be a long day.
And just an FYI, Bob, I tried to sneak out of there like four minutes early, and they wouldn't let me. So great job on your staff.
Tackle that guy.
Imagine that, a commissioner trying to leave early.
I had to get the fire department.
Anything else, Bob?
No.
Okay, at this time, we're adjourned. Bring it back to the board chair.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Steve. This time, we'll have Christopher, the highway engineer, county engineer.
Good morning, Commissioners. And if you will just allow me something to bring up. I, you have a presentation I was going to, to bring up, and I'll share the, on the screen. So and I need to go back to shared screen. All right, hopefully, all those participating online can see the screen now. This first item that I want to talk about is about the Local Road Improvement Program. And I provided some background to this, but I did prepare a presentation that I'd like to talk about this morning. Just because this program isn't a regular program. It's not a, it's a grant program, but it's not available to us every year. So the Local Road Improvement Program, LREP as we call it, it's administered by MinDOT State Aid. And State Aid is a division in MinDOT that's, that exists solely to help out cities and counties and townships with administering construction projects and leverage outside funding, so to speak. So this, this program is established in statute. It was adopted by law or into law in 2002 with a rural road safety account added in 2005. We'll talk about the different accounts now. So this is a grant program that's available to, like I said, counties, cities, both State Aid cities, and those are the cities that are over 5,000 population, and small cities, and all the townships across the state. And your, your projects have to fall into one of three categories. One of them is trunk highway category. So this would be if we had a local project, say we had a county road that intersected with Highway 10 or Highway 23, and we were needing to build a interchange or build better connections with our county road with that trunk highway. We could apply for an LREP grant under the trunk highway corridors account or criteria under there. The second criteria, which is most likely what any projects that we would have fall into, is a route of regional significance, meaning that we want to do an improvement project on a road that has significance outside of just the local community. It's reaching a region within our county or with a neighboring county. And it has to be a local road construction, reconditioning, a reconstruction or reconditioning project, meaning they're wanting to get away from just like maintenance patching and maintenance-type activities. Here it goes into sign of the criteria, has to provide a regional or statewide benefit. Here's the thing, a minor collector or higher, and that's a functional classification, as we call it. If you're a minor collector or higher, usually you carry a higher volume of traffic than, than the roads around it. And you want to be ready to construct this by a certain date. We'll get into that a little bit later, but you just can't apply for the grant with an unknown construction date. They want these dollars to go to work as, as soon as possible when they award them. And a minimum expected life of 10 years. Once again, they're trying to get away from just maintenance activities. They want you to do a reconstruction project or a reconditioning, something that's going to last longer than 10 years. So we're trying to avoid patching, the crack filling, those kind of things with this kind of grant program. And there, there again, once again, CASA, so it's available to the county roads. MSAS, this is the municipal State Aid cities, streets, or city streets that would be a smaller city like Foley or Rice could be eligible, or township roads. Then this third category is a rural road safety. So if there was a safety improvement that was needed, you could apply for this grant. Every county has a rural road safety report. Ours was last completed in 2010. And most often, those projects, what I've seen has been successful in getting a grant, they're applying that grant to a project that shows up in that rural road safety report or safety plan. And there's some criteria for that. Be located on a CASA, ability to reduce the frequency and severity of crashes, the employee best practices. And there it is, the county road safety plan. That's what I was saying. Most likely, you're identifying or applying that funding to a project that's already been identified in your safety plan. And some of the same criteria as the, the route of regional significance. Okay, so a little bit of the selection process. There is a committee that's been created to evaluate all these applications. And it talks about it here, one county commissioner, one county engineer. And it talks about it here, one county commissioner, one county engineer, one city engineer, one city council member or city administrator, from each of the cities with a population over and under 5,000. That's a big number. I I thought I heard something, there's over 200 State Aid cities. That means that over 5,000 population. But they also receive input from AMC, Association of Minnesota Counties, the League of Minnesota Cities, MAT, which is the Minnesota Association of Townships, the Transportation Alliance, presidents of both county engineers and the City Engineers Association. And they have some goals on where they want to award the the grants. They're not hard, fast numbers, but certain percentage of it, they want to go into rural, and certain percentage they they keep in the metro, certain percentage they want to go towards specifically township projects and specific, a certain percentage towards small cities. So they have some goals like that, but that I don't think those are in statute that you have to hit that percentage exactly. We all have an application that we need to fill out, and that's due the first week in March. And then here's the other thing, a lot like federal funding or other grants, those cities with less than 5,000 population, townships must have the county sign on as a sponsor through a resolution. And we'll get to this a little bit later while I'm up here to talk about those cities and townships that want to apply for this. So there's the application is due March 3rd. The advisory committee meets in April, and they anticipate to awarding which projects are successful in May. So by this spring, we'll we'll know if anybody in our area gets this grant. So I know this word has gotten out there. I've been approached by, I think I was approached by all of our townships in our county because the Township Association was really pushing this. But here's some key things to note. Total, there was close to $190 million for the LREP. The problem is $109 million of that was earmarked for 23 projects. That left $75 million available to the counties, the smitty cities, both large and small, and the townships. I also heard something, there's like 1,700 townships in Minnesota that this funding is eligible. So it's not going to go far, and I think that was some of the concern. The township, I think, was pushing that there were 75 million dollars. That got interpreted that that $75 million is available just to townships, and that's not the case. We're all competing for that $75 million. Even if you distribute it equally among 87 counties, that's less than a million dollars for each county, and that doesn't go far when you're talking about needing to go towards a reconstruction project. So just to keep our expectations realistic here, I'm just being honest. The other criteria that's kind of key is they they want you to be able to construct that in '21, '22, or '23. So another interesting thing about this grant program, they want it towards some projects that are ready to construct this summer. Me, as your county highway engineer, if we were ready to construct this summer, I would hope that we had funding in place already. So that's kind of a an interesting thing. Why would they be awarding grants to projects that may already have funding in place if they're constructing them in just a starting construction in just a few months? But that's that's the grant criteria that that we're under. So, oh, I thought I had in the presentation, one thing I want to mention. Why this is kind of periodic and not consistent year to year is because even though it's in law, the money gets appropriated through a state bonding. And so that's where that that nearly $190 million came from, where did I have that? Was from last year's bonding bill that finally got signed into law back in October after, what, six special sessions? The last time I think funding was available was maybe 2018. So not every bonding bill has money for the LREP program, and the the amounts vary from bonding bill. So it's not a consistent grant program. But we do have money available this year for for projects. So I didn't want to spend a lot of details on that because there's a lot of nuances, and it's easy to get lost in the weeds. But are there any questions about the program in general?
So, Chris, so there's no, like, there's no actual dollar amount that says we're going to give it to cities under 5,000 or townships? It's they're all competing for the same roughly 75 million?
Yeah, like I said, there are some soft goals, certain percentages they want to hit. And I don't recall what those are. I think if I dug around some more, maybe on websites, some past emails, I might be able to find that percentage. But, yeah, I don't know how many, there's not a a set amount towards townships. And it's going to come down to projects. They may shoot for a certain percentage, maybe that's 10% going towards townships, you know, so seven and a half million over how many hundreds of township applications? And that may vary based on a project and how much they request. There is a maximum request that you can have, and that's $1,250,000. The benefit of this program is if your project's going to cost less than that, you can get funded 100% by this grant program. There's not a set local match. But once again, back to a reconditioning or a reconstruction project, a reconstruction project's a million dollars per mile, so.
It doesn't go far.
Mr. Chair. So with all the counties and state of Minnesota, they all have six to seven or eight applications, and how do they determine who's going to get the funding?
Yeah, that is a very good question. I think that's why there's this big committee. They're going to hash that out, so they're meeting in late April. It may be optimistic to think that we're going to have results by May. But that's that's where we're at, so, yeah, I am glad that I'm not on that committee. Because I think it's going to be tough. How do you say one project's worthy and one's not?
Your your comment earlier that the Association of Minnesota Townships, they really went after this this time. I could never remember even hearing about it through the townships prior to.
Yeah.
But they they must really think that there's there's money for townships in there this time.
There is, it's just very limited.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you look at some of what some of our townships requested, and it's like, there's only 75 million. And if they're going to give 3 million or 4 million to Benton County Townships, that's not a lot left, you know?
In my conversation with our townships, it's really, they just need money to do their year to year maintenance. They need more money for graveling, they need more money for patching and crack filling, they need more money to put striping or signing up. And I think it kinds of, it's starting to bring to light some of the issues and deficiencies in transportation funding. We're not going to be able to grant our way out of this, and a lot of us just need money to to maintain what we already have. It's easy to throw some grants at some new project that we can all be proud of and and happy for, but. It's like getting money for a new car but not having money to put gas or oil in it, so.
So I had one question on your your application for from Langola Township. Where, you know, they had, it must be about a two-mile stretch in there, I think. You had County Road 27 and 35th Avenue. That is not a county road, I it's always been a township road, 35th has been. Was that at one time a county road that that you came up with that?
Yeah, no, I don't, they pulled that off of Google Maps, which has that probably incorrectly labeled, so. It's not currently a county road, and I don't know if it was a county road years ago before we adopted the county State Aid system. But, yeah, it's just a.
Just a township.
Township road now, yep.
I mean, they're not doing anything to it, it's just a cross through road.
Yeah.
So, okay.
So that was the presentation. Now, we have individual projects that have individual resolutions to consider to accompany the grant application. So maybe being a little bit selfish, I thought we'd start with the county road projects, so. And once again, so to be eligible, you're looking at projects that could be constructed in '21, '22, or '23. So I looked at projects that we were planning that could easily accomplish that. And one of them, the first one that came to mind was CASA 1 reclaim location. And why this came to mind is because although this is out of date, some of these years have changed. We did receive federal funding through the APO on this CASA 1 full-depth reclamation project from '29 up to this point right here, and that's because that's where the APO boundary stops. So we could easily apply for this LREP to cover our local match to the federal funding. And we could also use it to cover project expenses to continue this reclaim project up to the point that it splits from County Road 78. We could also apply for just doing a reclaim on this road all the way up to CASA 2. That's an easy project for us to put together plans. We don't need any additional right of way, we can fit the the roadway within the existing roadway footprint. So that's, I would apply, like to apply for an LREP grant for a full-depth reclamation of CASA 1 from basically from '29 all the way up to CASA 2.
Chris, when you do that, are you going to, I think we talked about this in in the past, to asphalt those shoulders and?
Yes, exactly, that's really what we need to do. There's a lot of truck traffic on this stretch, as you can imagine, with with Golden Plump over here. That is a constant maintenance battle, is the edge drop-off issue on the gravel shoulder. So, yeah, we would, we would, and that's why we are fortunate to have those wide gravel shoulders. We can easily pave those and still be within the existing footprint. It means we don't need additional right of way, we don't need to do a lot of environmental permitting, it's an easy project to deliver.
Okay, so we need to take these one at a time?
Yeah, I I I think so. It does need a resolution for each project, that's why the resolutions are different, just so you can show that it was specific to that project. Like, I think that's probably more important for the township projects to show that we're we're supportive of their specific project, so.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution to support County Road 1 reclaim project from County Road 78 to CASA 2. That's what you're looking for, Chris?
I'll second. Motion's been made and seconded to adopt the reclaim from county for County Road 1. Is there any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'll ask Beth to call the roll.
Commissioner Schlangen?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson? Oh. You're muted. Commissioner Johnson?
He's muted now.
I'm sorry, aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinon?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And we move on, Chris.
All right, we'll keep moving on. So the next item, next project that I would like to submit is CASA 3. Once again, it's very similar to CASA 1, it would be a full-depth reclamation project. And this one would from the the city limits, north city limits of Gilman all the way up to Morrison County line. It already has existing wide gravel shoulders, so we would pave those shoulders as well. Don't need any additional right of way, environmental permitting would be very minimal. Once again, another easy project to deliver.
I'll make a motion to support the reclaim for CASA 3 from Gilman to Morrison County?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to for the reclaim of CASA 3 from Gilman to the Morrison County line. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, Beth, you want to call the roll?
Commissioner Schlangen?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinon?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, we'll keep moving on here. The next project I would like to submit would be County Road 21. Another full-depth reclamation project again. We would put it together and be ready in 2023, so we still meet the grant requirements. And this would be basically from the intersection with County Road 12 all the way up to Morrison County line. Well, I think it's another easy project to deliver since we're just doing a full-depth reclamation and not a reconstruction, so. If it was a reconstruction, I don't know if we'd be ready to construct it by 2023, so. So this would be the third project that we would submit from from Benton County.
Looking for a motion? I can make that motion. Okay, Scott, I'll second it then. Motion's been made and seconded to do a claim on CASA 21 from Rice to the Morrison County line. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Beth, you want to call the roll?
Commissioner Schlangen?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinon?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, we'll keep moving out of the interest of time. And so the first item on the agenda that was not our project, yeah, the land, we'll go back to the Langola project. So, yeah, I had spoken with Langola a few times. They would like to move forward with a grant application to reconstruct 165th Street. So hopefully, you can see that on the screen here. Yeah, it looks like they want to do a street improvement, they're calling it. I believe this may be a reconstruction project, I'm not entirely sure what it is. This would be a township project, they have hired their own engineering consultant, more engineering, to help assist with the grant application. Well, that's something I didn't mention in the my presentation. If a local city or township was successful in securing a grant, their project would need to be designed to meet minimum State Aid standards. And so this is what I told all the townships when all of them had called me was, we do not have the staff to be able to provide that assistance, even if we were to build that township back. We just don't have the capacity with doing our own projects, we wouldn't be able to take on theirs. So that's something that they should be prepared to do is to to seek a consultant to help them prepare those plans. I said that I would assist in acquiring that consultant, whether it's putting together a request for proposal and things like that. But it really should be their project, and they should hire their consultant to do that. So Langola, I think, was already prepared to do that, and they have hired more engineering to help them with that. So that's why you see their their drawings from more engineering. I wish I could provide more details other than that, but they would like to apply for this grant as well.
Chris, I got a question on the townships. Knowing where some township's road, you know, lead to, there's many township roads that come off a county road and lead to really nowhere but a dead end, so there they must have to be a connecting part?
Yeah, and that's where I think some of the townships, after discussions, decided not to move forward with grants because some of the roads that they would like to do improvements were dead ends. And I said, that's going to be difficult to try to prove that regional significance, unless you had like a major generator, like you had some kind of facility, like if it was manufacturing or something at the end of that dead end that that generated a lot of vehicles per day. And then you need to, there's, and when you get into the grant application, there's some other language that talks about, are you increasing to a 10-ton capacity? And then you might be able to make that stretch, but some of them, once again, they're, they just need more money to maintain their dead-end roads sometimes, and this grant application probably is not the best place to to get that kind of funding.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Chris, one of the things that you said is you believe this is a reclamation of the of the road, and you don't have a lot of detail. Or what happens if we put, we approve this, and it wasn't their intent to bring it up according to the what the grant needs, and they misunderstand it?
Well, I guess one of two things, that's assuming that it was successful, and the the committee reviewed it and thought this was a good project and awarded them money. Then the township would need to be prepared to to meet the minimum State Aid standards for this road. And if they're not doing that, then they would have to, I guess, forfeit the 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 grant money. And it's all back to cost, the engineering costs are not eligible, and it may, the project may cost more than they're anticipating. But that'll have to be, so application due March 3rd, we, I haven't seen all the applications yet. But those will have to be explained in the application. So I think at this point, it all feels very rushed, but some decisions are having to be made now, so you could put that on your application. And that's the other thing, you may get a grant award, anything above that, the townships should be prepared to to cover. Any any cost above that grant award.
So I got a question on the townships and the cities. So the grant application, that don't fall under your responsibilities, does it?
No, I I asked them to see if they could have, find some help to prepare the applications. Partly because, and once again, maybe it's a little bit selfish, but, you know, I have my own grant applications I'm hoping to submit. And and, you know, maybe it just wouldn't be, do them justice. If our projects are going to be competing against each other, I need to make my application sound like they're worthwhile projects, and. And would I be able to make theirs sound just as worthwhile as mine? I don't know, so.
Probably why some of them hired an engineer to make it look and keep the job done for them instead of trying to do it themselves. Or, I mean, they can't rely on, you know, every time one of these come around and we have, you know, what do we got, eight, ten of them? We can't rely on our county people to do all the work for the cities and the townships.
Yeah. Well, even if we build them back, right now, we don't have the staffing levels to accomplish that and still deliver our own projects.
Commissioner Heinem?
I do believe a lot of responsibility should be put back on the township anyway, you know, for all of this application process.
Okay, so.
So we have, I'll move approval to adopt a resolution in support of Langola Township grant application one six, or grant application for one hundred and sixty-fifth street improvement?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Commissioner, I will just add that, okay, so applications due March third. I had asked all the townships to be ready by this board meeting. We do have one more board meeting on March second that if you did have questions, I could take back and get those answered and still bring it back for the March second. But March second board meeting would be our drop dead date. But this is why I asked them to be prepared by the sixteenth, so if there was questions, we had at least one more chance to get those answered. So before you approve it, I just wanted to throw that out there that if you need me to ask questions to the township, we can do that.
Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure that they're clear and understand that they have to have their own engineer.
Right, I know what this one is. I don't know what the rest. So I know Langola has contacted me about their meeting tomorrow night and they want this before their board to, whether to move forward or not.
Okay.
So, I mean, if.
Yeah, I can let them know, yeah, after this meeting. And then when the signed resolution comes in, I'll certainly forward that on to them as soon as I can, so.
All right, it's been made and seconded. You want to call the roll, Beth?
Commissioner Schlangen?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, moving right down the agenda here. Looks like the next one is Watab Township. So Watab Township has hired a consultant as well, a different one, WSB. But they would like to improve Sucker Creek Road. And this may be more of a reconstruction. And the reason why I know a little bit more about this is because we have been working with Watab Township to reconstruct or replace this bridge over Sucker Creek. So ideally, if they were to get a grant, we would, we would try to coordinate the projects. So the road project happened in the same year that we're replacing this bridge. And that's why I know I think this is more of a reconstruction than just a full depth reclamation. And they've had their engineer, their consultant engineer, was that the bottom of it? I thought there, yeah. WSB has been working on this for some time. So, yeah, that's probably why I know more details about this particular project, because I've been familiar with it for a little bit, so. So once again, they're seeking county support to submit an application for this project.
Any other questions? Scott?
Yes, so moved.
I'll second it. Any other discussion? I do know that this road is a high-traffic road for them. And the bridge is, I don't know, Chris probably knows more about the bridge than I do, but it's probably sinking every year.
Yeah, it is. That's why we're designing it right now to the replacement structure for that. And yeah, they really need to get that road up to ten tons because there is a lot of truck traffic on that road due to a business north of, north of where the bridge is. So yeah, you got sharing place and the only way out really, these are, these are minimum maintenance roads, designated minimum maintenance roads. So all these residents come out to our Casaw Thirteen on Sucker Creek Road.
Okay, I think Scott had a question. Scott, did you have a question?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Chris, do you have an idea yet of what type of replacement that'll be? Are you looking at a flat top or are you going to have concrete culverts in there or what you thought?
Yeah, we already know that those, they'll be replaced with precast concrete box culverts. I think they're fourteen-foot spans, so there'll be two lines of concrete box culvert, so. And then, yeah, the idea is to make those structures long enough, they wouldn't need guard rail. That cuts down on maintenance and those kind of things like that, so. We had a coordination meeting last month between the township's designer, our bridge designer, and make sure that we're going to match up roadway width. So we have the same lane widths and shoulder widths on the bridge that they were wanting to have on the road itself, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Beth, you want to call the roll again?
Commissioner Schlangen?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem?
Aye.
All right. Well, since we're in the northwest, north, yeah, west part of the county, we'll stay there for one more project. And this one is coming from the city of Rice. So once again, city of Rice is under five thousand population. They need to have the support of the county to apply for this application. And so they would like to improve Gateway Drive. It's an industrial area. They need to bring it up to ten-ton standards due to a lot of truck traffic and industrial traffic coming in and out of it. And yeah, they want to go ahead and reconstruct it up to here, which I believe, yeah, it looks like these are lots. These have all been platted up to here as an industrial park. So I think that this, they could make the argument almost as a, as a regional need due to the industrial area and needing to bring it up to ten-ton standards. And so they have also hired more engineering as well. More was already on contract as their city engineer for such things. So they've already started working with them on this project. And this may have been in planning for a while, even before this grant application became available. Yeah, well, there's Highway Ten there, and I think you guys know where those businesses are. Performance Foods and Vernig up there, so.
And Vernig is just under, they're having an expansion right now going on, so.
That would be, I would certainly hope that they would put those kind of things in their applications.
Yeah, I don't know what they did, but, and you're right. I think Amanda's actually working with them lots to the north to get them shovel-ready. Because they have some other interest in there too, so, yeah, this looks like a good project also. So we're looking for a motion?
Yeah.
Motion is, excuse me, motion of support for the city of Rice LRIP grant application for Gateway Drive.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Beth, you want to call the roll?
Commissioner Schlangen?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, I think we're at the last one on my list. So Mindon Township would like to submit an application as well. They would like to improve Shadowwood Drive. And I'm not entirely sure of all the details, so I did find on the map where Shadowwood Drive is. And I don't think it goes all the way up to here. There was a portion when Highway Twenty-three was expanded, that Shadowwood Drive was reconstructed. So they're looking at a reconditioning project from almost the Highway Twenty-three through somewhere in here. I'm not sure of the limits. Once again, they've got a lot of residents in the area and it parallels a highway, a trunk highway, which the grant application mentions that if you can show where you provide relief from a trunk highway, that that will be considered in your review as well. So they might be able to make that argument that this is a frontage road for the trunk highway, eliminates the need for much, multiple entrances and relieves some congestion on the trunk highway, so. So they're seeking county board support for their application as well.
Any other questions?
I'll move approval for Mindon Township support grant application for Shadowwood Drive Northeast project.
Is there a second? Okay, Beth, second it? Any other discussion? Want to call the roll, Beth?
Commissioner Schlangen?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, well, thank you. I'm sure these townships will appreciate the support and will all work hard over the next couple of weeks to get our applications in and we'll see what comes of it. One thing I wanted to mention before I leave is, talking with my counterparts in other counties, they're experiencing a lot of the same things. A lot of their townships were approaching them to help out with applications and things. And I think maybe the biggest thing that we're hoping out of this is that there'll be hundreds of applications that's going to help highlight the need out there for transportation funding. Knowing that, it reminds me of a cereal box, sweet steaks. Many will apply, few will win, but we're hoping that that'll show that there's a big need out there and more needs to be done still, so.
Mr. Chair, Chris, I heard you on the radio here, I think it was last week, about funding for state roads.
Okay, was that WJ Lynn?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, yeah, I do have a presentation prepared that I want to talk to the board someday. It's about, yeah, we saw a reduction in our Casaw funding this year due to gas tax revenues being down. It's not, you know, in May last year, they were looking at a fifteen percent reduction. We're sitting at about nine percent reduction right now. And where that's going to really hurt us is on our maintenance side, since, you know, fifty percent of our roads receive state aid funding for maintenance as well. I think we've been very blessed, let's say that we've had a mild winter as far as snowfall so far. We've had bitterly cold, but we haven't been plowing as much as we have the previous year or so. Now, I say that and I probably just jinxed us. We'll wait till March and April.
Yeah, right.
But that's where we're going to feel the effect, is on the maintenance side. And that's where, just like the townships, we need just more money to maintain what we have, let alone construct new, so.
Then gas tax will affect townships too, won't it?
That's right, because they do get an allotment through the gas tax formula as well, so. Be, be interesting to see how it plays out, I suppose, so.
Chair?
Chris, we did, we did receive your update on the tax, the local tax.
Sure, yeah.
And it appears that it went up. The sixty-day, what was it? The sixty-day back haul, basically, January, February is actually for November, December.
That's, yeah, because that's what it seems like. That's, we get this really kind of complicated spreadsheet from the state that shows the month that it was deposited in, but then the month that they collected. And that's usually what it is. It's about two months behind. And that's why I think it kind of indicative, why is February higher than January, December? And I think that's what it is. That's when the state is dispersing what they collected in December. So that's why I kind of attribute it to, maybe that's holiday shopping in December. We're finally receiving in February. Yeah, so that's good. Once again, though, sales tax is only good for those, those projects on that sales tax resolution. It's not helping us with fuel for snail plow trucks or crack filling or pothole patching, those kind of things, so.
It still does help.
It does. I am very thankful and appreciative of it, so.
I guess I'm just encouraged, you know, when we did the study and was brought before us, they said one point nine million and we're at two point five million. That's significantly higher than, you know, I think we were kind of thinking, well, maybe we could get to two million an hour, two point five.
Sure, yeah, that is good. So everybody needs to keep shopping local.
Yeah, and that's pretty much what happened.
Yep, it is. Yeah. And it's interesting too, I don't want to editorialize too much here, but with the pandemic, everybody's staying home more. Did we receive a benefit from not being able to go elsewhere? If the economy opens back up and people go on vacations and stuff, will we see it declining? So I hope not, but it is encouraging to see the numbers so far.
Yeah, I agree, so. Chris, are you going to stick around for a little bit? I got a question for you.
I can certainly do that, yeah, so.
All right, thanks for all that, helping everybody in our county get up to speed here, eh? Monty?
Well, Mr. Chair, what you have in front of you is a draft joint powers agreement. It would govern the water plan for the Rum River watershed. And Michelle Meyer, Assistant County Attorney, is with us, and so is Jerry Machi from our Soil and Water Conservation District. I think the purpose today was simply just to review the document, go over its major points and understand, are you comfortable with this structure that you see in front of you? So probably at this point, I would say turn it to Michelle. So between Michelle and Jerry, they'll take us through the document and then answer your questions. Hi, Michelle.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good morning.
All right, perfect. Well, what you have in front of you is a document that has been worked on for months and I want to thank Jerry Machi for being so involved in this process and getting us to this point because he's been part and parcel in developing this structure. And what the current plan is, is to go forward with a joint powers entity versus a joint powers collaboration. And the goal of that would be to better protect the individual parties, to protect the fiscal agents, and to overall limit that liability that you might get if you don't have a separate entity. And at this point, what they are proposing, the powers would be for this particular entity would be that they can contract, they can contract for coordinator position, they can contract for a fiscal host, and that they can accept grants, apply for grants, accept funds, accept gifts. The powers that they wouldn't have would be to hire employees, own real property, the ability to levy, or ability to incur debt or bond. So the powers that this group would have would be limited. Funds for this particular entity would be covered under the grant. That would cover the insurance, that would also cover any services that are contracted for, like that fiscal agents or coordinator. The plan at this point would be, if you're okay with this structure of an entity versus a collaboration, that we would go forward, continue to work on the documents that you have in front of you. And once the plan is developed by that policy committee, that then at that point, the boards or individual party boards would approve that plan and then they would also sign off on that joint powers agreement. Now, do you have any questions of the documents that you've seen today, any questions regarding that structure?
No, I don't. I think I heard everything there was to discuss this. I don't know about the rest of them.
I'm good.
Okay, no, I don't, nobody seems to have a question.
Perfect. Jerry, is there anything that you would like to add?
I would just, I'd like to add that I think, Michelle, you've done an outstanding job. We're working with all the attorneys that are involved and thank you again for paying such close attention to detail. I just add that the same process will be gone through tomorrow morning at our SWCD board meeting and I fully expect our board to approve it and move forward with the structure and content, so. It looks, it looks pretty good.
Okay, anybody else have anything? I'd just like to comment that I know Jerry had many questions and he's really stuck up for Benton County on this. We had phone conversations and had phone conversations with Michelle from County Attorneys and they worked, the county attorneys worked really good because this was not a unanimous decision when this went forward. It took two-thirds to get to this point. And I think, I think we did, we did okay.
And thank you, Commissioner Pop, for your help in this as well. Are you guys okay moving forward with this structure and?
Well, you just need a consensus, right, Michelle?
Correct.
Okay, I guess I am.
I am.
I am.
Commissioner Schlangen?
Aye.
And Scott is? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, so everybody's in, you know, and the consensus to move forward with it.
All right, I will pass it along to my counterparts and they appreciate your time.
Okay, there's one, one other question I know is coming up is, they still want to have some say in the ditch system on drainage, and I think we're having a meeting on that, I think this week yet or the beginning of next week, before our meeting a week from Thursday. We'll see how that goes out, you know, they want to, in. We'll see how that goes out, you know, they want to, in, in my estimation, they want to have too much say, which could hinder county's ability to, to clean ditches and that. I don't think we need another layer of government is my talk, you know, that's my take on it. We don't need another la- a layer of government trying to get involved when we clean a ditch. We have enough problems now getting some of this done. So we'll see how that meeting goes and probably come back to you, Michelle.
Perfect.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Okay, down to Commissioner, meeting updates. Steve?
Oh, let everybody else go.
Okay.
I can be last.
You can be one.
I had a lot of.
I can go ahead and start if you're, I can go ahead and start if you're okay with that.
Perfect.
Go ahead.
Um, on February 8th, I was able to meet online with the Extension Committee and, and this was my first meeting, of course, and attends, I have a lot of great information, a lot of just listening on my part to see how this committee, uh, operates. Uh, I think it's going to be a lot of great information for us going forward. Looks like we're meeting it three more times this year. Um, they certainly put a lot of time and effort into trying to keep things moving forward with COVID situation, so I appreciate that. Looking forward to, uh, becoming more involved in that. I did get fortunate to be appointed to the, uh, uh, current year's election. So I'm looking forward to working with another committee member and I believe with, uh, correct if I'm wrong, Ed, but I believe it was with Rick Gilbertson that we'll be working with on that.
Uh, Rick Gilbertson and Nate, Nathan?
And Nate, yes, thank you.
Yep.
Um, also then on February 9th, I have the, uh, opportunity to meet with the City of Foley in regards to the mayor, uh, Mayor Bettendorf. And also the city administrator, uh, Sarah Brun. Um, tried to wear a couple of different hats that night. The first night was a planning commission hat. Um, from, uh, previous experience with the planning commission, uh, we have been basically begging the City of Foley for orderly annexation planning uh, for the last 15 years. And, uh, they're actually at that spot now where they do have a resolution drawn up and have approached, uh, Gilmanton Township for that. Um, it does, unlike, at, at least at the beginning, that Gilmanton, um, had some concerns from some of their constituents and that we're not ready to move ahead with that. Uh, we were able to, uh, move ahead with discussion and having the city, uh, have an open meeting, informal meeting coming up on the 23rd of February. Along with township officials, along with, uh, the township, uh, constituents would be invited to attend the meeting. We're also going to have Roxanne there just as a, uh, to be available for any per professional opinions on how things should move forward. And, uh, myself too will be there to support, to support this. I, I think at the end of the day, uh, people need to realize that if we don't move ahead with something orderly, the city will go ahead and take what they need. And, and I, I don't believe that's the best outcome for anybody. I, I think to do this orderly makes a lot of sense. And I'm certainly hoping that the city, uh, can get together with the township and, and make this happen. So that's coming up on the 23rd at 7:00 PM at City Hall. Um, and also was able to attend, uh, virtually the career solution and solutions annual meeting. It was informative to me because before that I had absolutely no idea what this was about, so. Uh, obviously I have a lot more to learn on that and I'm looking forward to that. And again, I'm more likely to spend listening and trying to get up to speed on what's going on, so. I appreciate those of you that have been involved, Mr. Hein and Jerry, and, and I'm sure there's going to be a lot more information coming forward from that. And that's it for me, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Slungin, do you have anything? You want to report on it this time?
I was introduced to a bunch of boards also, uh, the council, uh, Central Minnesota Council on Aging. Um, I was also in on, uh, Career Solutions and the Retired Senior Volunteer Program. Um, the First Steps programs. We have a lot of great programs for our community for, uh, for people looking for help and willing to help.
Okay, thank you. Um, me, okay. Well, I had the Extension Committee meeting and I'd just like to say that, you know, we welcomed three new members on this committee, which is probably the most that we've had at one given time, um, since I've been on there. We have, um, I think it was Angie Arnold and Natalie Schmidt and then Scott Johnson. So, and out of that committee, that's a pretty large turnover. Um, but that's a pretty well, well-run machine that they have there going. They got a great regional director. They got good staff all the way along. I think the staff hires in the last, oh, probably three years, you know, since, since, uh, Dan Martin's left has been really good and we've got some really good people online. Our newest one is the, the, uh, the, um, animal science educator. She's relatively new, hasn't had a chance to get out and see anybody. Uh, she's new to the area, come out of, I believe she come out of Indiana. Um, so she's been, uh, trying to get as much done as she can, but they all seem very talented. Um, and then we had Micah, um, that was last week, Wednesday. There was a, quite a pile of stuff went on there that, um, Jared was on, you know, listening and, um, you know, they, they really get into the issues and one of the things that, you know, they're, they're supporting is no county aid cuts. Um, they were talking a little bit and I didn't get quite all of it, that there's, there's no conformality for the PPP taxes that come out. The state, the state hasn't adopted anything and you could be taxed on this.
Correct.
Yeah, is that what you got out of it?
That's exactly, and they haven't told anybody this yet.
Yeah, yeah, basically the state hasn't told anybody that. Um, then they had 1.2 million for the, um, the deficit of, they think 1.2 million is going to be where the deficit is going to be and not the three or four bi- or billion that they anticipated because of the new, uh, taxes. They think that, uh, not new taxes, but tax revenue is going to be greater than they anticipated in the February forecast. Um, sales tax, um, was allocated at 75 million, you know, tax on s- county schools and state that'd be a tax for things that they haven't. Now, it's another thing they haven't done to relieve them from the sales tax, tax that comes in. So, they want to get that done. Um, what else? They had a couple of bills, um, that are, you know, some Senate File 459 increases the regulations fee for some of the counties, um, that lost money. Uh, let's see, the township roads, so the truck weight is, um, is in there again. You know, we have a certain group of legislators that want to increase the truck weight on county roads. And every year it seems to come up and every year it doesn't. One of these years they're going to get it through, right, Chris?
Yeah.
I mean, it, and it seems to be the same people every year, don't it?
It, it does. It's, it's septic hall. And the problem, the biggest problem we have is they want to take away them needing to get a permit. Yeah. And we really think as locals, we know best what roads they can drive on than the state can. So don't take away our right to say you can drive on this road, but not that road, so.
Okay, the other, one of the other ones they have is that's, uh, Senate File 625, the auto parts sales, you know, 1.45 million. Forty-five percent of it of the full tax would go to 60% instead of 45. If they can, and that would go to, you know, the high, the highway user fee or highway whatever, so. Um, and they did mention a little bit that gas tax was down 6.7 million or something.
Didn't they also say that, uh, they're looking at increasing like license, um, tabs and stuff like that to where it would, more would come back to the county?
Right, for our, our DMV, they would want to, you know, give us a little more money for doing that, so. And that's good because I think they run pretty lean and mean over there, so. And that was the only, all that I had.
All right, uh, just to go back on the Micah meeting, there was a lot of information given in that amount of time. One of the things that I grabbed out of that was the, uh, 8.8 million in accounting error. That was not, that was not, uh, included in the governor's budget, so.
That was the human services.
The human services accounting error and it's not in anybody's budget right now, so I don't know how that could be, but. Um, with that, that's, I think you covered everything on that side. Uh, Career Solutions, we're on that, that's, that's a great system. There's a lot of, uh, a lot of talk about, you know, the individuals that it helps and everything. I made a great job on that, Steve, and keep going. Um, we were, we had the Solid Waste Committee meeting, um, the eighth, went through a bunch of score grants and stuff like that. A lot of money being spent. I think there's still more in there in the account, correct? That could be used, so, um, we also got the allied waste contract that came before us today. Uh, I was on the, um, you, you already covered the Micah. I was on the St. Cloud APO. Um, that was, uh, a, a very good meeting. It was actually very good for our county. They brought up six, uh, projects that were, uh, in our, i- in the APO area totaling about 15 million in, um, um, actual federal funding, um, that was submitted. Total federal funding requested on those was 8.8 million. And, uh, available funding on those projects, uh, from the federal government was 2.135 million. So, that was, uh, there was a lot of money put in, only so much can come out. The City of Sock Rapids had a project, uh, from Second Avenue South to Benton Drive, 10th Street. Um, that was, uh, actually ranked, uh, number one on the list.
Really?
Yes, and how, how it works is you can get up to 80% funded. The minimum is 30% funded. Um, the, uh, APO did unanimously, after some, um, conversations back and forth, um, uh, getting 80% funded at 1.395 million. So, go ahead.
Yeah, so with that street, that's determined by the bus routes and everything.
Yep, okay, thank you. I'm still learning this, so, but I thought, uh, I thought it was a, a, a great win for the, the City of Sock Rapids and Benton County because it, I happen to be along that area and it definitely could use a little, little work. Um, Sherburne County got the other million dollars or, uh, that was leftover. Uh, they were actually ranked fourth and they moved up because of the percentage funded. So, between our two projects, I think it had a little bit of a heartache, um, on some other areas that we had to kind of fight for a little bit, but in, in the end, uh, that's how that all came out. So it was, uh, it was a, it was a good meeting for Benton County and Sock Rapids. That's all I got.
Okay, here we go. So, yes, Monday we had the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, like, and Jared is appointed Vice Chair of that committee. So next year you'll be running it. We adopted some new language because we were uncomfortable with some applications and had to determine how we want to move forward with the grant process. Very long discussion about that, so more to come on that. I, I had seven meetings last week, so bear with me. I'll see if I can remember all of them. So actually Tuesday, I actually went to a Midland Township meeting. And they were totally surprised and shocked to see me. Of course, I know all of them because I've been on with boards with them previously.
Okay.
Uh, actually, I only went there for information, but I ended up helping them on some applications that Chris is going to receive. So they were very appreciative of me being there. Let's see here, where, where do we go next? We'll go to Career Solutions. Uh, that was our annual meeting. So we had, uh, five testimonials of people that go through the Workforce Center. Give testimony of how well this really works. What people don't understand is when they apply for UI, this is the first place they have to go to to seek help. You know, so that was a good thing. So thanks, uh, thank everybody for being on there. It was a very good program and of course, 15 minutes before the program, I was told to give an award out. Uh, I wasn't really, you know, happy about that, but it worked out. And then Commissioner Spence Berkeley did receive an award too for being on Career Solutions like forever. Very, very long time, you know, so, so that was good. Uh, we'll just jump to Friday. Friday was a very long meeting. I was at the Shack Meeting. Very interesting, listened to Jen Malcolm speak, listened to a lot of speakers. Went into, uh, our own little central district for conversations. What, one thing, the federal funding in 2002 was at 16 million and 2019 it's cut down to 9 million for federal funding. Uh, what people don't realize is that 35% really comes from local taxes, our local tax levy for the, all these programs and human services. It's a pretty high price, you know, uh, and I can honestly tell you in this meeting, is Bob on? Okay, Commissioners got beat up pretty bad, pretty bad, because we as Commissioners don't know what everybody does. And, and we as Commissioners don't understand how important the funding is to these people. And I thought, okay, here we go. So, very interesting meeting, more to come with that too.
Okay.
I'm going to leave everything and that'll be it. All right, that'll be all.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Commissioner Concerns, anybody got any Commissioner Concerns? Hearing none, how about setting any committee in the halls?
I think I just have one. Uh, so it's kind of a package deal, lots of subjects. The first is we want to invite the architect Better Johnson to come in and give you a presentation on the options that they've been looking at for renovations to our old human services building. Uh, we did a contract agreement with them, uh, several months ago and kind of put that on hold. And we told them, you know, we're just going to kind of, uh, we're not going to move forward at this point. So they want to, they at least share with you what they've done so far and the options that they, and ideas they have for us. Um, I know Mike Harvey wants to have a committee of the whole talk about our system of local assessors, the sustainability of that system of, of having local assessors. I think too probably, especially considering the discussion today, we also probably want to talk about the tax CAMA options, costs and, and timeframe and so on. And looking to Chris, hey, Chris, do you think we would have a, a committee of the whole talk about the five-year? Is, is March, is mid-March too early?
No, no, that would be fine, mid-March.
Right, so I was thinking all of these things would, would occur, uh, mid-March, so the week of March 15th.
Wow.
For that whole basket of issues.
Wow.
So what that week works for you all, uh, for me personally, the 15th doesn't work.
Well, the 16th is going to be a very long day already.
It's a board meeting day, yep. I would not recommend that. So Wednesday, the 17th or Thursday, the 18th?
We got the AMC on the 17th.
Is that Ledge Conference? Ledge Conference?
Government 101.
Oh, okay.
Oh, sorry, Government 101, okay. And the 18th is Ledge Conference, so that's probably out then. So our new board members have the, the 101, but then the 18th is, uh, so it looks like we probably should go to the following week. Or Friday, the 19th, unless you want to break.
Break.
How about the week of March 22nd then?
I could probably do the 23rd on a Tuesday.
23rd, okay, that's open, it's a good day.
Good, we're good here.
23rd is worth it.
Okay.
March 23rd, so 9:00 AM, okay?
Yep.
They got work for you, Chris?
Works good.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're going to do several items that day then, right?
Excuse me, sir?
We're going to do several items that day then.
Yeah, like I said, Better Johnson, assessor, local, the local assessor system, the tax CAMA options discussion and then five-year role program. So, yeah, I would expect probably about two hours.
Okay.
Yep. All right, yeah, so the 20, I'm sorry, we said the 23rd at 9:00 then. And that's all we had for new stuff.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I just want to remind all Commissioners about our County Board Goal Setting Meeting, March 4th. That is very important to attend. Uh, there's a lot of things that get hashed out. So I just wanted to let all Commissioners know that. That is very important.
And, and thank you for bringing it up, Commissioner Hein, and is, that will be at Jack and Jen's and.
Right.
And it's going to be a challenge to have a remote option on that.
Correct.
You know, if board members wish to have one, uh, we will do everything we can to make that happen. At this point, I.
At this point, I just couldn't necessarily guarantee that we can have a remote option at Jack and Jim's Restaurant in Duome.
Yeah.
It would be a challenge, that's for sure. Um, so I guess if if some board members need a remote option, we may have to consider just moving it here and having it here. So if if it's a challenge for anyone, please let me know, and then and we can, we'll work something out.
And then in the process.
I have a Council on Aging, um, meeting that day, but skip that one when it comes years, right?
What what time is that meeting?
Which one?
It's 10 o'clock, too.
10 o'clock?
Our goal-setting session starts at 10.
I I think our, I think our goal-setting is a little more important than, uh, than any of our other subcommittees we have to attend that day.
Okay. I guess I should be, yeah, I would emphasize that, too. I think we definitely want to find a time that works for everyone. It would be a, a, a shame for someone that could not be there. It's a very important discussion to have. So I guess Commissioner Slungan, if if, you know, you're not able to rearrange that schedule, perhaps you could let us know, let me know, and then we'll come up with something else, but, um, yeah, I would not want to proceed and have, not have all five of you all there.
Correct.
Yeah, it's, you know.
This is highly important.
Right, we we missed one last year, and we need to get one done this year, and, you know, sooner than later would be my.
We've got a lot to talk about, even more than, I'm going to have more things put on that agenda, too, so, to talk about, so.
Commissioner Slungan, are you able to attend in person on the floor, do you believe?
I should be able to.
Perfect, that'd be great.
And I guess I should just add, too, Mr. Chair, that is, if any, anyone has any agenda items they'd like to put on there, please let me know, and I'll put them. I usually toss some agenda items out there, and you let me know if you got agenda items, and of course, you're not limited to that, you know, when you you get there and you have other things you want to talk about, of course, that's great.
Okay.
That's, so we could get a motion to set that one, at least?
Yeah. Motion to set, uh, committee of the whole?
Second.
Motion's been made in second to set the committee of the halls. Beth, you want to call the roll?
Commissioner Slungan?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinen?
Aye.
Any other business to come before the board this morning?
No, sir.
Or adjourned.